Congressman Joe Bonner recently talked to constituents at a town hall meeting in Orange Beach, Alabama. His district covers the city of Mobile and Alabama's Gulf Coast. Congressman Bonner is seeking his fifth term in the U.S. House. This is just over an hour.
Thank you all for coming, guys. We really appreciate your time and effort to be here. Through the last few months, I've learned a lot. And I've learned the value of allies, and I've learned the value of loyalty in the political arena, which is rare. That's one thing I've learned. It's very rare. But I want you to know something. Congressman Bonner is my friend. He's my buddy, because he has been there for us, not me, but us, in every fight, every battle that I've had over the last four months. And I want you to understand, all I had to do was pick the phone up, and he took care of business. And it means a lot to me, and I hope it means a lot to you guys, because he has done that for us. So, without further ado, I'd like to welcome and introduce Honorable Congressman Joe Bonner. Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to the people of Orange Beach, Pleasure Island, for coming out. I want to return the favor. Our world changed in a very real way on April 20th. As we all know, we have lived with hurricane season. We have lived through hurricane season. We've recovered from hurricane season. But as the news broke that there had been a tragedy out in the Gulf of Mexico on Deep Water Horizon, none of us could have imagined what the next few days and weeks and months would bring to us. This community, this island, under the leadership of Mayor Kennan, Mayor Kraft, your state leadership, your local leadership, county leadership, has been with one voice, in solidarity, to make sure that this tragedy did not go unnoticed by the President of the United States or people at the highest levels of corporate America. We are so blessed to have Mayor Kennan leading this community, so thank you, Mayor. Well, it's good to be back. This time last year when we were here, there were no seats in the room, because the topic was health care. And it was a topic that continued when we went back into session, and continued into Christmas and New Years, and then, as you know, the President got his way, and the Congress eventually passed a bill, and it now has been signed into law. But a lot's happened here on the fifth anniversary of Hurricane Katrina. As we celebrate, and I think we should celebrate, the fact that they have capped the well. It's not permanent yet, but we have every reason to believe it will. And yet, you can't celebrate without being mindful of the fact that the last 120-plus days have taken a toll on our area, unlike anything we've seen, anything we've experienced. Today, in addition to having a town meeting, this is the last town meeting that we've scheduled for this week. I think we're at number 12, or 13, or 14. I'm not sure. But it's appropriate that we're finishing up here in Orange Beach, and it's especially appropriate to the people of this community that we welcome a national audience. C-SPAN is actually going to be televising and replaying this town hall meeting. So, if you didn't have a chance to put on your powder, don't worry, I didn't either. But I say that not to make anyone nervous about asking a question or making a comment, but just to let you know that when you have a question or a comment, we're going to ask you to raise your hand, and then they're going to bring a microphone, so you'll have a chance to have your question heard by citizens throughout this country. Now, when we do town hall meetings like this, I always start out with a couple words of thanks. I say this from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for the privilege of working for you. You're my boss. You and about 635,000 other people who live in the first congressional district. Thanks for coming out today to ask a question or to offer a comment. In the event you came out because you need our help, that's good, too. I've got people in my office, they're in the back. Rachel Kaiser is in a coral-colored dress. Brian Parker is in seersucker. They work in our Baldwin County office. And Brooks Chu, who works in my Mobile office but lives in Baldwin County. If you need our help, and you want to talk about something, or you need the help of this office, and you don't want it to be on C-SPAN, or you don't even want your neighbor to know about it, then we'd love to have a chance to get the information from you so that we can go to work on your behalf. A couple more things. You might have a question that not only do you not want C-SPAN to televise, but you don't want your husband or wife to know you asked. We've got some cards. And if you'd like to put a question down, you can hand it to me. I'll call you back. In fact, I'll call you probably on the way over. I had a man yesterday at a town meeting that we had in Bruton, who said that his wife was in the hospital down at Baptist in Pensacola. And normally, she came to our town meetings, and he thought it'd be nice if I would call her. I won't tell you his name, but I said, "Sir, as unpopular as Congress is, I'm afraid I might put her into a state of heart attack if I call her." But I did, and she's doing better. So if you want me to call you, if you want me to respond to a matter privately, I'm happy to do that. And then, last but least, we also have some links to our website for two programs that we are participating in. It's called "America Speaking Out and You Cut." It gives you an opportunity to not just tell me as your congressman, but to tell the entire Congress, the Speaker of the House, and the Republican and Democratic leadership, what you're concerned about, and what you'd like to see done as it relates to the direction of our country. So, we'd love to give you these addresses, and we'd love to hear from you in any of a number of ways. One more word of thanks, and this was not something that I had necessarily planned on, but I want to do this because I mean it. There's a young man here who's a resident of this community. He spent about a year and a half of his time and money going door-to-door trying to be your congressman. And I want to recognize Peter Gennaris, who deserves a lot of thanks for what he tried to do. He now has, he and his wife have a beautiful little baby. He told me that he just took his first steps. But ladies and gentlemen, the problems we face as a nation aren't going to be solved in Washington, D.C. They're going to be solved in towns like Orange Beach, Alabama. And while Peter and I ran for the same job, we didn't run against each other. You never heard anything negative or adverse. And I really mean this, and I think the mayor will agree, and I know the council members will agree. You should tip your hat when someone's willing to put their life and their family on hold to ask for the opportunity and the privilege to work for you. So, Peter, thank you for being here, and please show your wife and son a little love. You know, I come to Orange Beach knowing that there's a lot of concern about what's happened over the last few months, and so I'm getting ready to go to your questions or comments. But very briefly, I think it is safe to say, based on the other communities I've visited and the other comments I've received, many people, most people, are concerned about what's going on with our country. Concerned about the direction that we're going in, the amount of money that we're borrowing, the amount of money that we're spending. And so, whether it's borrowing too much money from China and other countries, putting a burden, a mortgage, on our future, and a burden on the backs of our children and grandchildren, these are some serious challenges facing us. Some in Washington would have you believe that the recovery is here, that they actually called it "The Recovery Summer," and happy days, we're here again. I would have a hard time going to Monroeville in my district. It's had 20% unemployment. When the unemployment rate during the Great Depression was 25%, I'd be hard-pressed to go to Monroe County and say, "Hey, guys, good times are here again." Most people would think I'd lost my mind. We've got some serious challenges, but I believe with all of my heart that there are solutions out there. Not popular, not easy, but there are solutions out there. But the challenge is going to be for Washington to start listening to America, and for your elected representatives, and senators, and the President, start listening to the concerns, and the frustrations, and the fears, and the hopes of the American people. So, again, I came today to say thank you for the privilege of working for you, of representing you. I would love to take any comments, questions, compliments, ideas, or suggestions. Back to your nation's capital. Yes, sir?
I have a question about our local concerns about the BP.
Yes, sir.
Would that be appropriate? Is there any firm guidelines that you all have issued to the rental agencies, the vacation rental agencies, and the private owner rental people for tourism? Is there any firm advice given to them that they are to, out of the monies they get, pay a certain amount of debt for lodging tax?
We've not given any advice on that effect, but I will tell you that there was some discussion early on about whether the funding that was being made available first by BP and now by Mr. Feinberg's group, in terms of compensation, would be taxable. The Internal Revenue Service has reminded us that it is taxable, and in terms of lodging taxes, that would really be something, I think, more at the local level. Is that right, Mayor?
Yes, and I just think for the tourists, but if they pay us our whole revenues, if they should, then they should not be responsible having to pay the taxes, because we're getting those from BP. And that is, so, but that would be my vote.
But the reason I ask that is because of that answer.
Right.
People that collect monies from tourism automatically have to pay a percent of lodging tax to the state.
Right.
The state then redistributes to the county, municipalities, and the convention bureau. So if there's confusion on who isn't doing what, there may be redundancy in claims that BP or now Feinberg can say, "If you folks don't have your act together, why should I necessarily pay you until we know that you know that the state should get a certain percent of the monies you got, lodging's tax-wise?" That doesn't count sales tax for people that are in business, and they're now saying, "I don't sell as many hot dogs or hamburgers." So, that issue, to me, is an issue. And I understand that you all have talked about federal tax. Everyone knows that we better pay y'all. But now, I'm trying to get the state to get their monies from them so that they don't get confused as to who does what to whom.
It is a great question. It's the first time it's come up in these meetings, but it probably should have been something that we should have been bringing up, because it's a very fair question. I hate to muddy the water, but I'm going to tell you that, in my view, the water has been muddied considerably by the Attorney General of Alabama filing suit against BP. Now, there may be a time where we have to file suit against BP. But one of the concerns I've got is that the Attorney General did not, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but I don't think he called the mayor of Orange Beach, or the mayor of Gulf Shores, the mayor of Isle of Atrey, or the mayor of Mobile, or the mayor of Dolphin Island, and said, "Hey, guys, what do you think?" And unfortunately, by filing the suit preemptively, as you know, the Feinberg account, the escrow account, that the President and others worked to create the $20 billion, that's not for government reimbursement. I actually wished it had been, more money put into it, but I wish that it had been, that there would have been a one-stop shop, so that communities would be able to file their claims under the new system. That was not agreed to. And so, as a result, Governor Riley was leading the negotiations with BP to make Orange Beach, Gulf Shores, Baldwin County, and the county school system and others whole, to the best of our ability to determine what the losses have been, some of that from lodging tax. And those negotiations have basically come to a chilling halt. So, that is an added frustration. I don't think the mayor can tell you right now what the state's going to be able to do, because those negotiations are on hold right now. And my only plea to the Attorney General would be, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but I've always believed that a lawyer had to have a client to represent. And I don't know if Troy has refused to consult with the local mayors, or county leaders, or state leaders, or the governor. It makes me wonder why he's filing this suit at this particular time. We may need to sue BP. But Mississippi hasn't filed suit, Florida hasn't filed suit, Louisiana hasn't filed suit, and I just wish that we could have let the governor negotiate on behalf of the communities and the counties. I think we could have given you a more definitive answer to your question. And I hope that we're able to get this resolved, but I fear that that lawsuit is going to be a real impediment. But thank you for your question. I'll be happy to look into it further.
I would appreciate that.
And see if we can get some additional information. Captain?
Congressman, we always appreciate you coming and visiting us, and thank you so much for helping our fishing community. One of our concerns right now, of course, is seafood safety. It's perception among a lot of people. When our fall red snapper season was announced last Friday, I had a phone call from a gentleman, and his first question that he asked me was, "Captain, will you eat the fish?" And I said, "Absolutely. I have, you know, no doubt that, you know, the fish is safe." He said, "I won't call you back." He calls back and says, "Our group's kind of concerned. We're not going to come right now. We're going to wait." So this is going to be an issue that is going to continue to be one that we're going to have to deal with. And what I'm asking for is that we need your help, you know, to get the message out that, you know, the seafood's safe. There's a lot of people that are questioning whether the FDA and NOAA is doing a good job. But what I'd like, on opening day of red snapper season, is for you to come down and go fishing with us and enjoy some red snapper, and that will be a wonderful way for our community to be able to give our nation that, "Hey, we're open for business."
Well, I can't think of a better invitation, and I don't know exactly when it is, but I promise you, unless there is something that I cannot get out of, I will be there with you on opening day. And I promise you, I will not only eat it, but I will enjoy it.
Well, we look forward, you know, to being, you know, able to do this, and anything that you could do, you know, to kind of help this issue along, because we're really concerned about it.
You know, Captain, you are, you're concerned because you've seen what this has done to the economy, to your business, to your colleagues, and friends, and neighbors, and families. And one of the concerns that I have, to your point, is I think the seafood's safe. Absolutely. I have eaten, you can look at me and tell, I've certainly not pushed away from the shrimp, or the crab, or the oysters, although the oysters have gotten so expensive it's hard to afford them. But I think that the seafood is safe. But there is a concern in the minds of not just residents down here, but all across the country, because there's so little confidence in government right now. How many people have, remember, just a couple days ago, we heard from NOAA and EPA that 75% of the oil has disappeared? How many people believe that? I hope it has. I hope that as we're doing testing, that we prove that it has disappeared, that it's gone. But there's so little confidence. Congress has got a 12%, 13% approval rating. The President's higher than that, but, look, there are a lot of people who think that if the government says it, you can trust that it's not true. So, you're right. We're going to have to do a good job of convincing the American people that not only is it safe and enjoyable and delicious to enjoy our seafood again, but that the beaches are safe. That's one of the challenges the mayor has, one of the challenges that the Chamber of Commerce has, is how do we go through the worst environmental, man-made crisis in the history of America, and have credibility when we tell people? Taylor Hicks is on TV right now, asking people to come back, and we want them back. But we have to also make certain that we're shooting straight with the American people, because our credibility is on the line. I had an opportunity to meet with a group of people from Arkansas and from Texas. We were down at Scoop's Ice Cream Parlor in Gulf Shores. My wife and I have been in Orange Beach every weekend except one since April 20th. Well, that's not true, since school got out. And there was a, I recognized a guy from Texas, because he had a big Texas Longhorn shirt on, and I asked him if he had heard about the outcome of the Rose Bowl game, but... But I went over and I thanked him. I said, "I'm a local official here. Thank you so much for coming." And I'll tell you, he said something that, whether it's going on the fishing boats, or playing on the golf courses, or playing in the water, it's something that was near and dear. It was a Chamber of Commerce moment. He said, "We love Gulf Shores and Orange Beach. This is where we want to come, bring our families, and we're going to keep coming." But I don't know when the opening day is, but I promise you, if I'm not there then, I will be there during the fall season, want to be out with you, and I want to tell the world, "Come on back. This is not only someplace that we love, but we love to share it with others."
Well, we really look forward to you coming. We appreciate that. Thank you. If I could add one thing, I want to thank you for your support on getting the funding so that the fish stock assessments can be done correctly. He really helped our fishing community out. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
October 1st is your opening day?
October 1st. Well, Aliska, my district director, says that she's going to be there, whether I'm there or not. You know, Captain, as unpopular as Congress is, I mentioned this earlier, if you found out that you had a member of Congress on your boat, you'd probably have some people bribing you to just push me off and let me be the bait. So, but I would love to be there. And I want to, again, I mean, the fishing community especially, the entire area has felt this. There's no community of the community that has felt it more personally than your community has. And I want you to know that your colleagues, and your families, and your friends have been in our prayers every day.
We appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am?
It'd be better if I stand. I have a question about the HELP program. I think some of our businesspeople and our fishermen may need this program. People that supplied so far for modifications seem to be stalled with the lenders. Some of these people have waited six months for an answer from their lenders. In the meantime, their homes are full of closed doors. I don't think these lenders are acting in good faith. I have two questions to ask you about this.
All right. Now, tell everyone what the program is.
The HELP program is a program that's set up for homeowners, and now even homeowners that pay their mortgages every month can qualify for this program. If you've had a drop in income, and you can't afford to make your monthly payment, but you could if they reduced your interest rate to 2% or 3%, the government, I think our President Obama has asked that these lenders look at this, and if you can afford to do it, that they will do this for you. And I don't know if the government supplements these lenders or not for this, but it keeps people from losing their homes. But I think people need help with this, because I don't think the lenders want to do it. If I was a lender, I probably wouldn't want to do it either, but people do need help. But what is Congressman doing, what's Congress doing to motivate lenders to move the modification program forward right now?
Let me, wrote your question down, but I want to touch on something that is to the heart of your question, but also is much broader than that. There are a lot of banks here, I would argue, do want to loan, do want to keep credit flowing, especially to customers that they have been working with and have considered business partners for years or decades. But I think what is happening, even if the President in good faith is saying to the Treasury Department, and the Federal Reserve, and FDIC, "You need to loosen up the regulations. You need to give some oxygen to these lending institutions so they can turn around and lend," I don't think that's happening. A few nights ago, here in Baldwin County, there were about 550 community bankers from all across the state that were having dinner. Brian Parker, from my Foley office, and I were invited to join, not just the bankers, but some people from the FDIC, from the Federal Reserve, from the Treasury Department, who were down from Washington, some were in from the Atlanta office. The annual appraisal is another dagger into an already fragile real estate system that was bad before April 20th. It was bad on April 19th. Again, y'all know this. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. And then along comes the oil spill, and it becomes worse. Folks from the federal government were saying to the bankers, "Lend the money. We're going to, we're going to give you some breathing room." But then when we got out and talked to the bankers one-on-one, they were saying, "We can't afford to lend, because the regulators and the examiners are coming in and putting a gun to our head, and saying, 'If you lend to this company or to this individual, we're going to strike it against you, and you're going to be held, you're going to be on the hook and be liable.'" Now, I just came from Gulf Shores. This question came up at a meeting that I had down there. Mayor Kraft, Mayor Kennan, and others have sent a pretty strong message. Mayor Kraft actually came up and testified before the House Financial Services Committee. And I have been led to believe that the chairman and the ranking Republican of the committee, Barney Frank of Massachusetts, and Spencer Backus of Birmingham, are sending a very strongly worded letter to the Treasury Department, to FDIC, that if we want the economy nationally to recover, we're going to have to give some breathing room to some of these lending institutions down here along the Gulf Coast, because it's getting desperate. I don't have a copy of that letter yet, but I will make one available to the mayor, and I'll be happy to make one to you or anyone else who would like it, because I think you are exactly right. These programs are only good if they're being used to benefit individuals that, in this instance, are creditworthy, but they're being suffocated because of the regulations that are coming down, not from elected officials. You can vote for members of Congress or senators, but these are regulators that most of you will ever, never get a chance to meet.
Is there a way to put a moratorium on the foreclosure, to stop the foreclosure while people apply for this, and get an answer from these lenders? And can y'all hold these lenders accountable that do not act in good faith?
Well, I don't know the answer to your question, but I will get you an answer. I will also tell you that Congress just passed, and the President signed into law a new federal regulatory bill. I don't know that any part of that legislation would deal with your questions, but I'm going to get Brian, or Brooks, or Allison to get your phone number and address, and we will get you an answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Stan?
Sir, you and I have talked several times before about the homeowner's insurance crisis here. It's been going on for almost four years now. It's having a crippling effect on the economy here. It's certainly hurting the homeowner's market. It has forced people into foreclosure simply because they can't keep up with their homeowner's insurance premiums. We've been trying to get the attention of the state government, because I realize insurance is basically a state problem, although the federal government is involved in insurance in a lot of different ways. Is there some way that the federal government can electrify the state government into doing something about this? Or is the Gene Taylor bill subject to resuscitation so that, so that we can have some sort of logical relief from this thing? I think if people understood exactly why they're paying six times the premiums they were paying four years ago, it might be a little easier to bear. But right now, we're in a state of confusion about this, because we can't get anybody authoritatively to talk to us with firm statistics to show us why we on the coast are having to pay such high premiums, which are not only affecting wind insurance, but also affecting fire and theft and all the rest of this insurance. I have a friend, for example, who's, who was dropped, his wind insurance was dropped, but the company that was insuring him said, "But you can keep the rest of your insurance," and they're charging him $1,200 a year more for it than he was paying before, even though there's no particular reason to believe that fire and theft should be more of a problem here than it is in the rest of the state. We're way above the state average, and we can't figure out why.
Well, Stan, it's a... Well, Stan, it's a great question, and as I said earlier to a different question, long before April 20th, the lack of affordable and accessible wind and hazard policy was a crippling effect, has had a crippling effect on the economy of this area. You mentioned that this is really not a responsibility of the federal government. You're right. There is not. You can come to Washington, D.C. Many of you have come before. I hope you'll all come sometime. You can go see the Department of the Treasury. You can go see the Department of Education, Department of Energy. There is not a U.S. Department of Insurance. And actually, I don't know that I want a U.S. Department of Insurance. But you're also right that over the years, we have been involved in kind of quasi role with insurance. The federal flood program is a great example. Now, for years, the federal flood program actually paid for itself. It actually, believe it or not, was in the black. There are very few federal programs that are in the black, but it was able to sustain itself from the premiums. Then all along comes Hurricane Ivan, and Hurricane Katrina, and Hurricane Rita. We ran through about five storms where the flood program went from being in the black to being in the red to the tune of about $16, $18 billion. Congressman Taylor, Democrat from Mississippi, a good friend of mine, Gene has introduced a bill that you referenced, that would basically say, well, the federal government, he doesn't want the federal government to start getting more involved in insurance either, but if you leave it up to the benevolence of the big insurance companies, what are they going to do? They're going to walk away because of the risk. And the risk is, you know, is not just on the coast, it's in Robertsdale, it's in Fairhope, it's in Loxley. It just keeps moving further and further up, where businesses and individual homeowners are being denied coverage, even if they've never filed a claim. Gene's bill, twice this year, actually twice this summer, came close to vote, and I was working as a Republican with a Democrat from Mississippi to try to get other Republicans and Democrats to give this legislation a chance. Congressman Taylor says that he doesn't believe this will cost money, because you're going to have to pay for it. You're going to have to charge appropriate premium levels. And my goal in sponsoring it was, quite frankly, not to get the federal government more involved in insurance, but to send a message to the insurance companies, that you can't come in and sell us fire insurance, or insurance for automobiles, or burial insurance, or the whole assortment of insurance, and not sell us what we need to be able to go to the bank, borrow money to buy a condo at the beach, or, sadly, as you noted, this is an issue that even in Alabama, we've not gotten our friends in North Alabama to understand the importance of a strong Baldwin County economy for the rest of the state. So it's a struggle. I hope that when we return in September after Labor Day, that Congressman Taylor is able to get the votes on his side, and I certainly intend to work to get the votes on our side, to pass this. We'll still have to get it passed through the Senate, and then it would still have to go to the administration. One other option, though. Governor Riley has been pressing the administration, and I think there is going to be some funding available in the program that Secretary Mavis, the Secretary of the Navy, that President Obama has appointed to help right the long-term recovery for the Gulf Coast region. He has worked with Mayor Kenan, and Mayor Kraft, and others. Some of this will probably come from the penalties, the fines, that will be assessed to BP, that will have to be paid because of the violation of the Oil Pollution Act of 1990. And one of the things we may want to consider when that money comes in, we've got to first fight the Gulf Coast lawmakers to keep it here on the Gulf Coast. But one of the things we may want to consider is to, look, Florida's got a problem, Mississippi's got a problem, we've all got the same problem. And what people don't realize is, the economy of the Gulf Coast is mighty important to the economy of the country. You know, for the last several months, we've been worried about what Greece, what's going on with Greece. Greece is a $356 billion economy. The Gulf Coast economy from Key West, Florida, to Brownsville, Texas, is a $2 trillion economy. So we are really important to Washington, as well as Montgomery. I'll do everything I can to work to get the Gene Taylor bill passed in the House, and then we'll have to work to get it passed in the Senate and take it up with the President.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Father?
Just pastor.
Pastor?
Lutheran. First of all, let me welcome you to the community here, and thank you. Actually, I've got two areas of concerns, but the first one has to deal with the program that's going out for payouts. In particular, the Christian Service Center is a ecumenically-based faith initiative here in the community. And there's been a lot of promises. When BP had actually contacted us and said, "What are you going to need?", we put together on four-hour notice, a summary of about $40,000, which they have verbally committed to, but now that has all fallen by the wayside. Talking to Mr. Feinberg's representatives, what we're finding out is, they don't know what they're going to do with nonprofits as a whole. And my question is, is there anything you all can do to help bring some pressure to bear that this needs to be taken a look at? And my reasoning for that, Christian Service Center, obviously, the giving is down, and we've been using our reserves to help this community at about $7,000 a month coming out of our reserves. So that's dropping, and we're seeing an increase, especially now, in the number of folks coming forward needing to be helped bridging things like utility bills, food, that sort of thing. And we feel like we've been kind of left high and dry out there. No real emphasis on recognizing, we're the last-ditch effort for folks here when they need that help at the very end. And I just want to see if there's any help you can give to that.
I'm going to get the information from you, and we'll be happy to contact, because that is in the fuzzy area, in terms of, it's not a business, and it's not an individual claim. I don't even know, quite frankly, whether we'll start with Mr. Feinberg, or we'll start with Mr. BP, but we'll start, we'll go there, and we'll see what we can do. If the promise was made, then, in my view, the promise must be kept.
And I will say it was verbal, to be fair about it, but they've never put it in writing.
Well, I don't know. Mayor, I don't know if you know anything about it, but I know the good work you do. You know, one of my favorite people in the world is someone who's a resident of Pleasure Island, and his name is Andy Andrews. And I love Andy, because he tells wonderful stories. But I also love him because of the fact that he went through hard times himself. His mom and dad died, he was 19, I think, one died from cancer, and the other died from a car wreck. At one time, he was homeless, lived under the pier in Gulf Shores. And he went through a very difficult time, like many people in this community are going through a difficult time. What Andy did, unlike what most of us would do, he went to the library, he checked out books, he read autobiographies on more than 200 famous people, and he saw in their stories how you didn't have to be destined to be a homeless person living under the pier. And he was able to take the stories of those people and weave them into stories that he's been able to tell. Andy's a man of faith. He is someone who has inspired generals to focus their troops on the mission, and spoken before four U.S. Presidents. And so, I don't know where we would be in this community or in this nation if we didn't have programs like the one you have mentioned to help people through difficult times. And I don't know, was unaware about the issue, but I'm more than happy to look into it, and we'll get your name and address. We'll be back in touch.
It's okay. I've got a second question that I'd like to ask. This has to do with some of the folks in our community, and I realize it's a real estate-based issue, but I know of two families in particular, young couples, that had lost their jobs due to one reason or another around the oil crisis. They found work in other locations, one in California in particular, but they could not sell their house here in order to move there, and they were in the lower income, making about $25,000 a year. The real estate issue seems to me needs to be addressed in some way for those folks that are finding employment elsewhere, or have a desire to relocate, but cannot because of the real estate just being dead. Is there anything, from your perspective, that can be done in this kind of scenario?
Well, that is a really tough challenge. And let me just say, and I think the mayor will back me up on this, I don't think anyone has done more to move Mr. Feinberg from here to here, especially with regard to real estate and Governor Riley. He has just been a bulldog on this issue. Because I can tell you, the original answer to the example you gave, or to a real estate agent who has lost a commission, or whatever the example is, was, "Sorry, Charlie. No help." Mr. Feinberg, I think I am correct. Correct me if I'm wrong to my team. I announced that there would be about $70 million, is that 60? $60 million set aside to help the real estate community.
I understand it's strictly realtors.
Well, it is, because here's the challenge. The couple that you used as the example, couldn't find work here, moved to another place.
Want to move, or they've actually declined the job now because they couldn't afford two households. At $25,000, who can afford that?
Well, here's the problem, though, and I'm not saying this in defense of, look, I'm not going to defend BP, I'm not here to defend Mr. Feinberg, but there is no way that we can predict today. In fact, you've got a better chance of predicting what might happen next year than I do in your line of work, but there's no way.
I'm giving a series of revelation, if you'd like to join.
I'll try to be there. I've got to go fishing, too. There's no way we can predict when the market's going to recover. It will recover. It always has.
No argument there.
The last time it recovered was after a hurricane. And we woke up after Hurricane Ivan, and we were walking the beaches of Orange Beach, and then President Bush was down here, and we were looking at homes and condominiums and buildings that had been destroyed. And what happened through the natural process was, you deal with the fear of the storm, you deal with the reality of the storm, and then you deal with the recovery from the storm. And so, I'm not in any way saying I'm not sympathetic to this, but I don't know that we're going to get Mr. Feinberg's $20 billion escrow account to include, although Governor Riley has pushed hard for it, but I don't know that we're going to get it to include loss of the value, because the value is going to come back up if people can hold the line until it does.
That was the key phrase right there at the end.
Hold the line?
Hold the line, particularly when it's folks that have lost their jobs. And I'm looking at a very specific group of folks. I'm not talking about us residents that are willing to wait this out, but rather those that have lost their jobs, have opportunity but can't take the opportunity because of the, that's a specific real need in the immediacy of the crises.
Look, I hear you loud and clear.
I'm just explaining.
It's not a decision that I think anyone in Congress will have a vote on. I don't even know that the President of the United States could weigh in on that. Mayor, when President Obama was here, having lunch at Tacky Jack's, I know he'd been a zero on a lot of things. I'm willing to commit to you that I'll take this issue and share it to as many people as I can. I just don't believe that there's going to be an easy, or probably even a happy, answer on that for the group of people you're talking about. But I appreciate you raising it.
We do nothing, we achieve nothing.
If you don't ask, you'll never know.
That's right.
Other questions, comments? Yes, sir?
I'm Randy Bog, I'm a local fisherman here. I just want to tell you, thank you for what you've done for the fishermen here. We've heard through some of the members of the Gulf Council how much you've helped us. I know the real estate agents here are really facing a tough time. In the last 10 years, the fishermen have given up here, through management, through everything else, about 80% of the fish we've been able to catch. If you think it's hard to get a real estate loan, try to get a loan on a boat, or try to fix your boat if you're struggling financially. The guys in the fishing industry are really, really hurt. We're trying to recover. We're out there working hard every day. The long-term effect has got to come from the Secretary of Commerce. We're facing the shortest seasons, the smallest bag limits that we've ever had in our life. Ben has been working really hard, and a bunch of us have came together to try to maximize what fish we have left to catch. And if you can help us with the Secretary of Commerce, and, you know, anything that they can do to help us through the National Marine Fisheries and the Gulf Council to move these seasons around, so we can maximize our time on the water, would be a great help to us, because we really are in the fishing industry. You know, we're frontline on this thing every day when we're out there in that Gulf, you know? Where our waters here off Alabama are still not open. You know, we're having to, you know, if we do get a trip, we're having to run, you know, over 70 miles around tripping closed waters, you know, 35 miles each direction to get where we can fish. You know, we haven't gone up on our prices, we're absorbing that right on into the cost, and it's making it really tough. So we appreciate what you've done, and, you know, if you get a chance with the Secretary of Commerce, please hold their feet to the fire, because we need all we can get.
I'll see if we can get the Secretary to come down on October 1st.
Yeah.
I will invite him. I'll be happy to.
I want to go on that trip.
All right. We're going to invite the Secretary to come down. Look, you are right. Y'all have gone through just an unimaginable set of circumstances that BP and the oil spill was just the icing on the cake. You've dealt with high fuel costs, $4 a gallon gas two years ago. You've dealt with hurricanes. You've dealt with bureaucrats in Washington that have gotten it down to where you can take a group of people out, and they can catch two fish, maybe. So you are the farmers of the ocean, and you're selling something that people love to do. It's as wholesome a recreation as you can find, plus, it's a great way to keep the environment. I have refused to believe some of the scientists and the people I've heard say that, you know, "We don't have any red snapper in the Gulf of Mexico anymore." That they don't know Orange Beach, Alabama. So I appreciate the compliment, but I also appreciate the challenge, and I will do more than, more than you might imagine. I will call the Secretary personally, I'll invite him down, I'll invite the head of National Marine Fisheries down, because in terms of the Alabama waters being closed, I actually talked with a gentleman from National Marine Fisheries just a couple days ago. There's a big fishing tournament, Labor Day tournament, and they called and asked, "What do we do to try to get the Alabama waters open?", because they've opened some of the federal waters in Louisiana and in Florida. And I was given every reason to believe that that might happen by now. Now, they're saying there's additional testing that needs to be done. And this is, this is just an unnecessary interference, as far as I'm concerned. So I'm going to do everything I can on that.
And we do appreciate what you've done, and don't think it goes unnoticed, because there's a lot, if it's trickled down to me, and I'm usually one of the last ones that know, because I try to stay as far from politics as I can.
You're a smart man.
But we do appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Other questions, comments, ideas? Yes, ma'am?
I was speaking earlier about the lack of credibility that the government has, and the Congress has, and personally, I think it has a lot to do with the influence that corporations have over our politics in this country. And I'm speaking particularly about the recent Supreme Court ruling allowing corporations to have unlimited expenditures for campaign advertising without disclosure. So I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the influence that lobbyists have over our government, how that affects regulations, how that affects the lack of enforcement of the regulations that we do have. And that showed up in this oil disaster, egg farming in Iowa, and so forth. I know there's a movement on to try to overturn that Supreme Court ruling, and also to limit the influence that lobbyists have, how they can move from lobbyists to a government position and back without a decent waiting period. Can you speak a little bit about that whole issue of corporate influence over our politics?
Well, keep in mind that prior to the Supreme Court decision, corporations could not give contributions to federal candidates. And I don't believe, and I will double-check this, I don't believe I have ever taken a contribution from a corporation in the eight years I've been your congressman. Now, employees of corporations can form political action committees, and they do. And those groups of employees will make political action committee contributions. I'm very proud of the fact that in the eight years that I've worked for you as your representative, that over 65% of the campaign contributions that I have received representative, that over 65% of the campaign contributions that I have received has come from people in South Alabama and in the state, families, individuals, who would send me $50 or $250. And I'm proud of that. It's the highest percentage of anyone in the Alabama delegation in terms of receiving personal contributions. You're right, the Supreme Court threw out a law that had been on the books for some time. But I would tell you, I'm just as concerned as you are about corporate contributions that can go unreported, but I'm also concerned about the unions that can take dues from their members and not give them a voice in terms of how those union dues are going to be spent to influence the political process, too. In terms of lobbyists, I don't want to be trite on this at all, I take what you say sincerely. But let me tell you, an average day in my life, I'll meet with a lobbyist from the banking industry, it's usually one of the local bankers, who's not a lobbyist, but he or she is lobbying about issues that affect his or her ability to lend money in Orange Beach or Gulf Shores. I'll meet from a lobbyist from the senior citizens community, they're lobbying me about Social Security. They're not a lobbyist, it's a person that has come to Washington, D.C. to talk to me. No, that's not what you're talking about, you're talking about the professional paid lobbyists. They get paid a lot of money. There are laws that are on the books now that say that if a member of Congress retires or is retired by the voters, that they have to wait, I believe it's two years, before they can go lobby. The President made a big to-do when he was running for office as a candidate, that he wouldn't have any lobbyists working in his administration. Unfortunately, that's a campaign promise that they've not been able to keep. But I hear you loud and clear, your concern, I believe, I don't want to put words in your mouth, because you spoke eloquently about the concern, but I think you want to make a point to me, is that you don't want others to have undue influence through a campaign contribution, or through some type of sitting down and writing a bill, or being more involved in my decision-making than you would be.
That's true.
Here's my challenge to you, and it's really to all of us. We really have to take voting more seriously in this country. In Alabama, a few weeks ago, we had a Republican primary and a Democratic primary. Now, if I were to ask for a show of hands, how many people six months ago would have predicted that Commissioner Ron Sparks would beat Congressman Artur Davis for the Democratic nomination for governor, and Dr. Robert Bentley would beat Bradley Byrne, Roy Moore, and Tim James, three much better-known people who spent millions of dollars, millions of dollars more than Dr. Bentley did, that Dr. Bentley would have been the Republican nominee? How many people truly would have believed that that would have happened? But unfortunately, or fortunately, fortunately for Dr. Bentley and for Commissioner Sparks, they're both good men, 24% of the people of this state who are registered, half the people, there's four and a half million people in Alabama, half of them aren't even registered. So, only 24% of the people who are registered took the time on a Tuesday in June to go vote. That has nothing to do with corporations, or lobbyists, or anything, it's got to do with us. Last year, I had a chance to go to Iraq. As your representative, I've had a chance to go to Iraq three times, to Afghanistan twice. I met with a group of people who voted in Iraq for the very first time. They told me they stood in a line three miles long, risked their lives for the right to vote in their very first election. And I thought, you know what? If the people of Orange Beach and Gulf Shores had to stand in a three-mile-long line to vote, it wouldn't be 24%, it might not even be 4%. So, I think the best way to make sure that corporations, unions, lobbyists, that no one controls your government, is for the American people to take their government back. And the best way to do that, I believe, is to be active. I would give anything if on election, let's take this coming election, November 2nd, drive around the streets of Orange Beach and see how many people have a yard sign in their yard. Have a bumper sticker on their bumper, wear a button to the grocery store. That, with all due respect, is the best way to keep America on the track we want us to go on. It's not just to say, well, let's, let's limit these, I agree with you, we need to limit any outside influence, especially if it's not being reported. But the better way, I think, is to make sure that people, I promise you, if I came in one day to the City Hall in Orange Beach and I said, "Guess what? You can't vote this week." "Why?" "Well, the government says you can't. We've taken away that right." People would be up in arms. Let's never assume that the privilege of voting is something that is always guaranteed.
Well, I think, I think you're preaching to the choir here, because I'm sure everybody that's in this room right now are very involved in their community and their politics, or we wouldn't be here.
You're right.
So, how do you get the word out to the people that don't come to these meetings, that don't, that don't want to get involved? How do we do it, besides go door-to-door?
You know, I've got 250 schools in my district, and I go anytime I'm invited. I'm actually, a student came in to see me with juvenile diabetes a few days ago, and said they'd like for me to come to the school, and when we called the school, they said, "Well, we don't know whether it's okay to, you know, you're a politician. We don't know if it's okay to bring a politician in." A lot of civic clubs will not allow elected officials to speak. It's a challenge, but it's really not how do I do it, it's how do we do it? How do you influence the people that you go to church with, or the people that you go bowling with, or the folks that you play bridge with or that you work with as a community volunteer, to get interested in keeping this country great? And it's a challenge, I don't think I can assume it, I think we all have to assume it. I appreciate your question very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got time for one more before the lights go off.
I didn't intend to say something.
Come on up.
Alan McQuaid. We appreciate what you've done for this community, we really do. And what I want to say to you is, I don't think, the people here feel so alone, so alone. First time we came to Orange Beach was to fish. We don't have insurance. I heard this gentleman, I heard this lady talk. I don't have much confidence in Alabama legislation, and I've got less in Congress. And somebody in Congress needs to get a movement going, like the Tea Party or whatever, and I'm not addressing that as such. Bring together to create some confidence. I hear people say, "Ain't no use for me voting, they gonna do what they want to anyway." And I think that's right. And I want to tell you, I voted twice for George Bush, and I did not vote for Obama. I wouldn't vote for either one of them again or ever. Bush took us into a war, not knowing how we was gonna get out of it. Every time the Republican Congress passed a bill and spent money, he didn't veto it, not at all. So, what happened? In '06, Democrats took over. They got worse, and then Obama came along and said, "We gonna have change," and we got just the change that I anticipated, but not that I wanted. I think Congress, respectable people like yourself, are gonna have to come together, just like Newt Kenwes did with Contract with America, but come out and say something to the people, "Here's what we're gonna do." What this lady was talking about, what this gentleman was talking about? I don't have any insurance, this counsel, it cost me $20,000, $22,000 a year, $22,000 before I could have an insurance. I can't afford it. I just bought a lot, and this place blowed away, I built a small blockhouse, put a metal roof on, and the heck with it. But Congress, Congress is the one that needs this. We elected Congress to go up there and run our country, and you need to come out with some morals, and when I say you, I'm talking about Congress, some morals, just like the lady was talking about. We don't need the insurance companies, the oil companies dictating what we're gonna do, but that is happening. And until we see some leadership like that, we can't get these people out of the boat. I work at the polls, I'm all over town, I hear these people. I heard probably an 85-year-old lady come in the other day working at the poll, said, "I'm gonna vote against everybody in office." I understand, lady. You know, this is what we need, some leadership in Congress, there's got to be enough good people that can come together with some things like yourself and say, "Here's something we go strive for, give people something to hope for." And thank you for listening.
Well, it's a great observation, it's a great challenge. It's a personal challenge that I take seriously. You know, I have one vote, and yet, I have an opportunity to speak for the voices of 635,000 people that I work for and represent in Congress. There isn't a single issue I could be asked to vote on that I'm going to make all 635,000 people happy, because it doesn't matter what the issue is, there's going to be someone who's going to disagree with whatever the vote was, or whatever the position that I took is. But I think you're exactly right, people have zero confidence. I mean, these folks who say that there's a 12% approval rating of Congress, I don't know where they are, because I don't approve of what Congress is doing, and I'm in Congress. So, you say, "Well, do something about it, Joe, that's why we pay you." That's true. I'm on the House Ethics Committee, one of the most unpleasant tasks that you could be asked to be on, because I have to sit on a committee that stands in judgment of our colleagues. There are five Republicans and five Democrats. And we have to, when we are made aware of someone who has possibly committed a violation or broken a rule or broken a law, we have to stand in judgment of those members. It's not an easy thing to do, but I'm trying as hard as I can, with my example, to do the right thing. But you're...
And I'll thank you, dude.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, but I know that it's not enough, because people are tired of hearing the promises before Election Day and after Election Day, seeing the results. They're tired of hearing the same old rhetoric in 30-second ads and seeing that our country's getting deeper in debt. We're borrowing more and more from Saudi Arabia, and China, and Brazil, and other countries. They're tired of the same challenges time and time again. I mean, most of what we talk about at these meetings, we could have talked about when Congressman Callahan was in office, or when Jack Edwards was in office. Many of these have not, are not new problems, they're the same problems we've yet to tackle. But I assure you of one thing, I hear the message loud and clear, and I believe, more importantly, Washington is hearing the message loud and clear. The Tea Party movement that sprang up last, began April 15th of last year, those were not Republicans that just were dissatisfied that President Obama had gotten elected, those were independents, they were former Republicans, they're former Democrats, they're current people that are just frustrated, because, like the lady, they think that Washington is owned lock, stock, and barrel by the special interest, and that your interest is not being heard. You know, every week, I'll give you a quick example as I close, and I'm not saying this looking for sympathy, I'm just letting you know, you know, what a week in my life. Most weeks, we're in session, 40 weeks out of the year. I live in Mobile with my wife and my 14-year-old daughter, she'll be 15 in a couple days, and my 12-year-old son. I don't live in Washington, D.C. I get on a plane on Monday mornings, and I fly to work, and I come home on Thursdays or Fridays, 40 weeks out of the year. During that week, I meet with a lot of people who come to see me, representing businesses and communities. Captain Ben came to see me a few months ago, and we had a chance to talk. He was a lobbyist, lobbying me, and yet, he's not a registered lobbyist, he's a concerned citizen about a community, the fishing community, and really, the broader community that he loves. During that day, I'll have votes on the House floor, I've got two committees I'm on, and I'll serve on those committees, and we'll have hearings, meetings, for hours on end. Is the system perfect? Absolutely not. Can it be improved? Of course. Got a 12% approval rating, there's a long way to go. But I take to heart your criticism, because I think it's meant in a constructive way. I can't speak for the other 435 members, I will tell you, though, in my view, this won't, most of you will not think I'm shooting straight with you here, I think most members of Congress do the same thing I do. I think most of them are good, honorable, decent people, honest people, who serve their community with the same conviction that I try to serve mine. And yet, when you get to Washington, there are some people who've gotten to Washington and spend too much time in Washington, they've forgotten what is happening in real America. And this is real America, the Beltway is not. So, thank you for your constructive comment, I will give you my word, that as your representative, I will do everything I can, as one person, to try to give you a reason to believe, one day, that the message got through, and that you can have confidence again in your government. And I know you've got confidence in your country. Thank you so much, God bless you all. Yes, sir?
I'm glad to speak.
All right.
I've been to 13 meetings, I believe, it's crowded. I guess we owe you a vote of confidence. People must be out spending their BP chips.
Good. Hey, let's hope they do. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, thank you for giving a word. I know what you all are thinking, let me know if I need to do anything to you.
Alan, what do you think? What are you ready for?
I've heard, man. It's not over.
Alan.
You know, I'm not...
You're done.
I'm happy with that.
You're doing all right.
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 You're doing all right.